Y'all would bow with us. Dear Lord, we want to thank you for this day, thank you for this beautiful weather, and most of all today, thank you for the rain to wash that pollen down. Oh, we ask that you look over us tonight, uh, you look over our public servants that are out there taking care of us, providing our safety and protection in the community, and that everyone that came tonight, please give them a safe ride home this evening. All these things, in Jesus' name we ask. Amen.
To the flag, United States of America, the Republic which is.
Don't move.
A second.
A move.
Second.
Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, I'd like to read the following. I'd like to take a moment to clarify the planning commission. The decision's made on rezoning and variance requests. Deny will be forwarded to the commissioners for final action on March twenty first, two thousand twenty-three. You wish to address the vote of commissioners at their meeting? Please see Ms. Stoller to obtain a request to speak for. Okay. First item on the agenda is a request to change the planning commission meeting from April the sixth to March the thirtieth. The purpose of this is because of the conflict with Masters Week. Do we have a motion to change that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to move the first April complaining commission meeting to the date of March thirtieth to accommodate Masters Week.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Now, first item on the agenda is Randolph Property Group, LLC, Mr. Butler.
Senator, Sheriff's request for provisional home occupation at forty-eight-six-four Hardy McManus Road. Current zone R one, single-family residential for a property management business. His location of the property on Hardy McManus and Hale- and Haleley Farm Road. An aerial view of the property and the existing site. Uh, you see the, uh, the, the box trucks that are there. That is part of the reason why they're requesting a provisional home occupation. They've already gotten a business license for the, basically a bookkeeping, a bookkeeping business on the site. They do have these trucks on site. Um, this is to allow them to, to allow these trucks to remain, to remain there with this request. Uh, they did propose to put in some screening on this, uh, on the, uh, uh, property line here to help to hide it from, from the adjacent neighbors. And staff recommends approval of the provisional home occupation.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on behalf of this issue? I'll guess they.
Mr. Randolph here. How long, how, how, how you doing, sir?
Let him come to my phone.
How you doing this evening?
State your name and address, please.
I'm Terry Randolph, forty-eight-six.
How, how long do you think those vehicles are gonna be on the property?
Oh, not long. Already stripped them of the, uh, cows and all that sort of stuff. Sale. Gonna keep. Hollywood self-story.
I drive down Hardy McManus.
Oh, yeah. Okay. All right. So you've seen them then?
Yeah, so. Put a date on there if he's gonna keep.
When you say not long, what are you talking about?
Well, I mean, we have one of them sold already.
Been obviously some complaints about them, and that's the reason we're trying to take the timeframe.
We understand. Some of the properties we own, one of those shopping center, Bel-Air, Harbor Freight now is. But two of the vehicles, five of them, for sale. Lot of destruction, a lot of mail's going there now. But we've had, um, some offers on it as well. Already closed on one of them. Those five will be gone. Literally probably. Can't predict it, but I know what I'm telling you. The pricing we picked was thirty-five thousand on the new ones. They only have four thousand miles on them. Liked the price on that, twenty-five thousand. The other ones with about twenty-five thousand miles on them. Because, uh, the pricing points on those are equivalent to the retail pricing we see for those same kinds of trucks with like eighty thousand miles. Nothing owned, owned, owed on them. We just wanna move them and.
Sure.
Uh, we. I saw for everybody, we just.
Any other questions?
None of them.
Yeah, so the three you are keeping, is there a way to kinda hide them from Hardy McManus better? And it, and it may be just because you've got seven out there right now that.
Right.
They're kinda standing out, you know, they're yellow and. Okay.
And the, I'm questioning the, the, the reason you're keeping three is, my understanding is you're using them for storage? Was that what I read?
I mean, actually, uh, one of them, the reason we've selected three, one of them is the, the other one that's just a, it's a, it's a horse of a truck. I mean, pull this building from here to the lake if it needed to. So it's hard, it's hard to part with something like that because once away, you need something like that. One of the trucks, um, actually has a lot of my father's, um, belongings in it. Garage. Sold at the self-storage. We had to take those things with us, okay, my father since passed. Um, and so, you know, it's one of those things where we, right now, it's, we're, we're frankly not compelled, or compel us, do anything with it right this very second. I mean, I just felt it as well because it's just.
Sure.
Found a place that, um, and, and candidly, we haven't spent that much energy on looking someplace to put my father's stuff.
Sure, absolutely. Okay, I'm good.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Like to have a motion to accept or deny Randolph Property Group.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the provisional home occupation for Randolph Property Group to LLC at forty-eight sixty-four Hardy McManus Road.
Second.
I'll second that. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Next item on the agenda is Quaker Knoll Phase Two off Wrightsboro Road.
Yes, sir. This is a final plat for Phase Two of Quaker Knoll off Wrightsboro Road. This is the rear section of the development further back from Wrightsboro Road, and it is the final phase of Quaker Knoll. This final plat includes sixty-eight single-family lots with a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet and an average lot size of twelve thousand eighty-one square feet. Uh, setbacks are a minimum of fifty-five feet from the center line of the roads and ten feet from the side and rear property lines in accordance with the R-two zoning. Uh, sidewalks are provided on both sides of the road and four point one-seven acres of open space is provided in this section. This is the existing site. And staff is recommending approval.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak for against this issue?
Good evening. I'm telephoning with Houston Homes. I'm just happy to answer any questions you guys have about the neighborhood.
Do I have any questions? Thank you for coming, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Have a motion to approve Quaker Knoll.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Quaker Knoll, Craker Knoll Phase Two off Wrightsboro Road.
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Now, this next issue, I understand there's someone here that would like to speak for this issue and someone that would like to speak against it. So if you would, in an orderly fashion, um, we'll, we'll discuss it, then it was to be. Talked about table in it.
So the, the.
Background.
So the request this evening is a rezoning from R-three to P-one at thirty-five thirty-five Stardust Drive on zero point three-seven acres for a child near Behavioral Center for Health and Wellness. His location of the property, north side of Stardust Drive. And the current zoning, again, R-three, you have some P-one adjacent to it. This is what amounts to an expansion of that existing business, and you have some other P-one on Bastion Road and also C-one across the street on Bastion. His aerial view of the property. Existing site. And the plot of the property. And the overall conceptual plans. So from a zoning standpoint, um, they're, they're keeping the existing residence. Uh, they're doing an addition on the back of it. Um, instead of doing a typical, uh, paved parking lot, they do have, uh, trugger pavers at the back, which will essentially look like grass on the back of the property. Uh, you have the, the concrete drive that'll be here, um, then it transitions very quickly, um, into the, the, the pavers there. Uh, this park, or this, um, driveway, driveway would, would be removed. The intent is to keep this looking as residential as, as possible, which is kinda what you would wanna see if you were going to have a professional development go into a neighborhood. Uh, you wanna keep it looking as, as, you know, uh, uh, as unobstrusive as possible. Uh, now, there have been some questions about the parking on the site. Uh, that is something that, that we did notice when we went out there, um, to put out our signs. There's parking in the right of way itself. Uh, so there was a condition or is a condition proposed that increases the parking on that site. Um, however, the applicant has requests to postpone this, uh, to work on some issues from the, or some concerns from the public as well as the overall site plan itself. In terms of the, uh, future land use map, this, this is within the in-town neighborhood. Uh, there isn't really a, a, anything mentioning any sort of professional use within in-town neighborhood. However, you do have this use here. There's already some P-ones. There is some ability to kinda have it move in if there is a good reason for that. Again, they have shown a pretty, pretty good plan overall, uh, to keep it looking residential. We do have a condition that if they were to tear down the building, it has to be, uh, essentially look like a residence if it were to be torn down anytime. Or the applicant has requests to postpone this. Uh, staff is in favor of that. Again, we have heard from the public already. Uh, in, in our office, y'all, y'all have had a few emails, um, from that, and also, uh, I've heard some of y'all had some on, on your, uh, private email as well. Uh, so again, working on it with the public would be beneficial for the applicant at this point. That concludes staff recommendation.
You say that people have requested.
Yeah, so ear- earlier they, they sent an email requesting that. Um, they're supposed to be here this evening as well, uh, to discuss that. So you probably wanna have them speak first and formally request that.
Well, first let's, uh, have someone speaking for this issue. If you would come to the microphone and speak, state your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Wilson Haynes, uh, five Conover Square, Augusta, Georgia. Um, pretty much what we'll said is, is where we are. We became aware at the end of last week that some of the neighbors, who I believe are here today, had a concern about the existing parking, uh, on the straight that, I don't know if it was clear or not, but the, the corner of Bastion Road and Stardust is already zoned, been rezoned from R-one to P-one some years back. That's where this business is located now. They've purchased the property behind it in order to expand and resolve some of the problems. Uh, we believe that the current design would actually alleviate some of the existing traffic and, and parking problems. That's what things trying to do. But, uh, the, some of the neighbors still have some concerns about it. And we do need to possibly redesign the plan to increase parking within this lot to further reduce those problems. And then if, if possible, have an opportunity to talk with some of these folks and see what we can do to, to, to turn. So we're requesting a postponement. A reasonable date.
I got any questions for you?
Yes, sir. Um, so you bought the property or prior to having it rezoned?
Yes, sir. Uh, what it was, is it coming out of an estate, and they were getting ready to sell it, and if we didn't buy it, bought it, it wouldn't be there anymore. So they went ahead and bought it, um, not, you know, assuming we would get zoning at all because we needed to apply for, but we had no other, no, no other realistic choice.
Nor do we see these things all the time when there's this contingent on zoning purchase contracts for property. Because you never know what's gonna happen.
Which is what I urged to do, but that, that wasn't realistic again. They, they were ready to sell and hadn't bought it someone else.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we would like to kind of let them speak against this issue.
My name is Tiffany Drake. I'm not sure now if it's gonna be postponed if I continue with everything. I've given you a copy, but I'll just proceed as if it was gonna be a decision-making tonight. Uh, I'm speaking on behalf of some people from Stardust. If you'll raise your hand if you're with me. Um, just to tell you, I've lived at this residence for twenty years. My husband grew up on this street. He was there in the eighty-five, and he has much extended family there. I'm gonna provide you with a petition for some of the people who are in opposition of rezoning this, this home at thirty-five thirty-five Stardust Drive. I don't think it should be a concerted rezone. It's more like an on-the-spot zone. Um, every lot in our neighborhood is residential. Nothing is professional. I can't think of any good reason to put a professional zone inside our neighborhood at all. Um, and, and this sale wasn't made public. There, it seems like it was a targeted residence. You never knew it was even on the market. It was just sold, and then there were signs in the yard to say, hey, it's gonna be zoned for something else. So I'm just gonna try not to read everything line for line. I hate to do that, but that's what I can do in this time, and I've provided you a copy of it also. Um, and it's from the concerned residents of Stardust Drive and the surrounding neighbors. So also people from Revere, Rainbow, and Phillips Drive. Professional properties such as medical offices or law firms can create many of the same challenges as commercial properties located in a residential area. Some specific reasons we don't want the property at thirty-five thirty-five to be rezoned. The increased traffic and parking demands, professional, professional properties attract more vehicular and pedestrian traffic than a typical residential property. Per the verbiage, straight from the applicant, there will be twenty to thirty-five trips per day. This can lead to larger parking issues and congestion on residential streets, which can only be overly inconvenient and potentially unsafe for residents. Pulling onto Bastion Road is already difficult enough. Just to turn left out of Bastion Road during the school zone or any time of day is difficult. And without that, it will increase traffic, and it's bound to lead to increased opportunities for accidents. There's disruptions to the neighborhood. Professional properties can create disturbances to the surrounding neighborhoods and boundaries, like the areas immediately beside it and around it. I'm one home down from this property. Reducing those distances would leave adjoining properties open and made less private. I have safety concerns due to the increased traffic. There's gonna be more safety concerns, such as vehicular and pedestrian, uh, and even security concerns. We know it can impact the well-being of our neighborhood. We have nothing against the work that they are doing or even the people that they serve, but if the current residential house expansion occurs, we feel like it'll be the place where most people are treated. That on Stardust Drive is where most of their clinical area will exist. Zoning regulations, we know many areas have zoning regulations that restrict certain types of professional activities in residential neighborhoods. This is to maintain the residential character of the neighborhood and protect the quality of life of its residents. We've already suffered through parking issues. I've overlooked them for a decade just because I'm not that person who has to call every day. We just make it work, but it's already been a problem. Even so much for me just to add, the neighbor across the street that's zoned professional put up toe-away signs and put rocks in the yard so they couldn't continue to park there, which in turn forced them down the street where you would have parking all the way in front of your home. Reduced property values. The presence of professional properties in a residential area can cause nearby homes to lose value due to more of the commercial nature of the area. Professionals should have more restrictions than commercial, but based on the numbers offered by the applicant, it will essentially operate as a commercial space with people coming and going from nine to six, mirroring a retail environment. Overall, professional properties are better suited for areas designated for mixed use or commercial development rather than our neighborhood or our residential area. Why it was zoned professional years ago is anyone's guess. However, we feel like increasing the professional footprint and traffic will compound the problem created by past boards. They couldn't have known back then that the major thoroughfare Bastion Road would become, but we certainly don't want our quiet little street to suffer anymore. Voting for disapproval will help ensure that these properties do not negatively impact the quality of life of our neighbors. It's important to remember that the process for establishing professional offices in a neighborhood can vary depending on the location and the specific circumstances. Therefore, with this signed position, the petition, the people of our neighborhood, we are advocating for the best interests of our neighborhood community and preventing the establishment of professional offices in our neighborhood. When this practice moved to Bastion Road in two thousand and twelve, there was an article in the Augusta Chronicle that stated the clinic already had a hundred patients when they moved from Fury's Lane. The smaller property wasn't able to handle the influx of traffic then. They now, on their billboard outside, have a list of five employees. In addition, on their website, there's six. They, if they had a staff meeting right now, they can all be there. And, and there's times now when they have cars crammed in a driveway, or if there's an emergency, that employee's not getting out. They, they're doing that now, I know, to help accommodate what's there, but there's, there's already cars lining the street, cars crammed into a driveway. They don't all fit. If you increase that anymore, even with a parking lot in the backyard, it won't work. There'll be more traffic. Our road is a cut-through to Fury's Ferry. People use that road to cut through to go to Fury's Ferry all the time. What I see now is when somebody can't find a place to park at their location, and you can tell the person is apprehensive to park in front of our house or because they don't wanna walk that far to the office. They just circle and circle and circle. We already have an issue with speeding down the road because it is a cut-through. But these are some of my major concerns that I've listed. And like I said, with what they already have listed as their staff, and I have no idea how many patients they have. I have no idea how often a psychologist works or a clinician works or when they see appointments. But I made that simple point. If they had a staff meeting today with what's listed on their board, they wouldn't fit. They just wouldn't fit. So if each clinician, at that time she had a hundred, if each clinician even had fifty, I don't know how they could ever get in and out of there. And I don't wanna be responsible for their schedules, have to worry about calling code enforcement every time I have a problem. I don't wanna be that burden, and I don't wanna be a nice pest. But I will work to strive and save my neighborhood.
Do, um, do you have a, any problem at all with us postponing this for them to try to come up with a better plan?
I don't have a problem with you postponing.
My main concern is I have children.
Could you state your name, please?
I'm Jamie Fulgem. I live at thirty-five twenty Stardust.
Yes, ma'am.
And like she said, we already have a problem with circling, and then we even had to move the basketball goal because kids can't play basketball on the road because you're scared they might get hit. Don't watch. I'm not saying that every one of them is patients or clients of hers. I'm just saying that we already have a problem, and I don't think ten more parking space spots in the back of that house.
Let's just see if we can come up with some sort of solution. So anybody else got any question?
I, I will tell you that I've been down there multiple times this week. I have.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion for a postponement? And if so, is it for the next meeting or?
Hold on, I think. Elsa wants to speak. Not sure if there was or not.
Yes, ma'am.
It's right there on, uh, on the road, right there. Very hard for anybody to come up and park there. And I don't know, understand. Someone that bought it. Other week. Always took care. I just don't understand with so many kids down on this road, right beside our house. Not right.
That's the reason we're recommending postponement, see if we can come up with some solutions or if they can come up with a better plan.
Like to keep our family, that a family oriented.
Yes, ma'am, and I understand, but we get a little bit repetitive, so. Any other questions? Yes, sir. Would, would, would two weeks give everybody enough time? All right. Do we have a motion to postpone the meeting until, what would that date be?
Sixteenth.
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 Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to postpone file RZ twenty-three dash zero-three dash zero-one rezoning from R-three to P-one at thirty-five thirty-five Stardust Drive for March sixteenth, Planning Commission.
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Now, this next item, Sarah Lynn is.
Companion variances, yeah.
Sir?
It'd be companion variances that go with the.
That goes with the other one, so.
That's right.
Need to make another motion? All right, Mr. Butler.
Well, that's fine. I mean, we'll, we'll need to go through it real quick. If anyone wants to speak, we'll, we'll do that, other than that. So, wait, wait, this is a, a companion variance to this. Thirty-five thirty-five Stardust Drive, variance section ninety-nine to ninety-eight, lists lot structure requirements. Ninety-eight one thirty-nine buffers and screens, reduce building setbacks and buffers on the property. His location of the property on Stardust Drive. And also the zoning, current zoning of the property is R-three. An aerial view of the site. And also the existing site. Plot of the property. So the request would be on, on the setbacks is to reduce the front building setback. Um, it's shown on here, as the plat shows, it's a twenty-five-foot front setback. It'd actually be thirty, um, according to this. Uh, it would be, the reduction would be, I think it was less than a foot, um, in terms of that. You could actually handle that as a minor waiver. Um, however, we're handling that, um, as, with, with this request. Uh, the bigger part of this is reduction, uh, of the buffer, of, if, if it is rezoned or, or to P-one, excuse me. They have a twenty-foot buffer. You can see here, this hash line goes through, it's all through the building. Um, so you really couldn't have it exist, um, the, or the building exists, uh, in order to have the buffer at twenty feet. So their request is reduce it down to a ten-foot, uh, buffer. That would be a privacy fence with trees and shrubs. And the, the, the intent there is to not have any light or noise spill out of the site essentially. Staff was recommending approval of the request with a condition. Again, showing a photometric plan, showing reason one for candidate or less of the property line. Show the required parts, site plan approval. This will be some, make sure the lights are not impacting adjacent properties. And the applicant has requested to postpone this, and staff is in support of that request.
Do I have a motion for the postponement?
Technically, you have to open the public hearing again, so if anybody wants to speak on this issue, they certainly can.
Anyone who wants to speak for against this issue? Okay. Now, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to postpone file VA twenty-three dash zero-three dash zero-three. Variance to section ninety dash ninety-eight and ninety dash one thirty-nine. To reduce the front, uh, building setback to fifty-three feet from the center line and to reduce the structural buffer width to ten feet at thirty-five thirty-five Stardust Drive. The March sixteenth, Planning Commission.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, the next item is, is Montgomery.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a rezoning of a point zero-five acre portion of the property at three four three Gardenia Drive from R-one single-family residential to R-two single-family residential. Uh, this is the location of the tract on the west side of Gardenia Drive in Hardy Point. And again, currently zoned R-one. You see the adjacent property to the west is zoned R-two. Uh, the intent is to combine a portion of this parcel with that adjacent R-two tract, so we are rezoning the portion that they are essentially selling to the, the neighbor. So this is the aerial showing the two houses. Again, both single-family residential in nature, so identical allowed uses. Uh, the difference is in the, the lot size and the setback requirements. Uh, one in particular being a difference in the rear setback requirements. And since we are dealing with a, a rear lot line between these two properties, we do want the, the zoning on each property to be the same throughout that parcel. This is the existing site on Gardenia Drive. We're not rezoning the front portion of this property, but the, the very back portion of it. And this is the property on Hardy Point that is purchasing that property, so it'll be added to the back of this lot. And so here we can see the portion of the property here. This is, all we are rezoning is this area here. And again, that is to match the zoning of the existing house on Hardy Point so that that lot will, will all be zoned R-two instead of having split zoning. Uh, this is in the neighborhood's character area on the future development map. Still single-family zoning, so very much in keeping with this character area, and staff is recommending approval.
Excuse me. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on behalf of this issue?
I'm, uh, Greg Geese, twelve forty-nine Hardy Point Drive. My neighbor Carlos Gardenia. We're just here to answer any questions y'all may have.
Any questions? Any questions?
Works for me.
All right, sir. Anyone like to speak against this issue? Do we have a motion to accept or deny?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve file RZ 23-03-02 rezoning from R1 to R2 for a .5 acre portion of the property at 343 Gardinia Drive.
Just to clarify, that's .05.
.05?
Even smaller.
I saw it, but I just didn't want to believe there's that piece of land that small.
Second. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Next item, Mr. Tidlin.
Uh, yes, sir. This is an application for a variance to reduce a, uh, rear setback at 5460 Washington Road. It's a 2.5 acre tract that's zoned RA. Uh, this is, uh, shows the location of the parcel, uh, just north of the intersection of Washington Road and Tubman Road, across from McClady Drive and Johnson Drive. Uh, this shows the zoning in the area. The, again, to reiterate, the parcel is, uh, in question is zoned RA, which is significant because the, uh, rear setback per code for RA zoning is 25 feet. Uh, this is a plat of the property. And this is an aerial, uh, of the property. Again, the, uh, the location in question on this property is, uh, where the house is nearest to this, uh, property line, uh, for the neighboring property. Uh, again, the rear setback for this property line to this structure would normally be 25 feet. However, the house is already within that rear setback. Uh, it's 18 feet from this property line. Um, additionally, on that aerial, uh, I was just wanting to make sure that, to draw you guys' attention to the, uh, access easement that runs near that, uh, property line, uh, which limits, uh, buildable space on the adjacent property, not the one in question, but the neighboring property, um, which, uh, therefore shouldn't cause any issue for the neighbors that the house is so close to the property line. Uh, this is an illustration of, uh, where the property line is. It's already been marked by a, uh, surveyor. Uh, there's a post in the ground right there, a little further up, and then one in the rear of the property, uh, illustrating again where the property line on, is on the property in question. Um, and again, the distance of the current house from the property line is for 18 feet. However, the applicant is, uh, applying to, uh, this is, uh, more photos of us going out to do the actual measurement to confirm that it was 18 feet away. And again, the, uh, applicant's, uh, proposal is to, uh, complete some renovations to her home to close in some sunrooms at the rear of her house. However, the, uh, largest issue, just be given the, uh, house's, uh, angle and orientation of the property line, is the proposed front porch that she's seeking to, uh, extend. It will, uh, extend slightly closer to the, the property line in question, uh, despite the fact that she's not building beyond the threshold of the house any closer to the property line. Uh, so staff wrote in that the requested reduction to the typical 25-foot rear setback for this property would go from 25 feet to 15 feet to take into account the extension of that proposed front porch. And staff is recommending approval of this variance.
Thanks, sir. Does anyone here that would like to speak for or against this issue? Got any questions? Like to have a motion to accept or deny?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve file VA 23-03-01. Variance to Section 9053, reducing rear setback at 5460 Washington Road.
Second. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Next item, Ms. Mystery.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a variance at 4408 Evans-Tolox Road, Suite A, on 6.65 acres. The current zoning is C2 general commercial, and requested to variance 90-147 use provisions to permit a drive-through window and lanes between the public street and the building. Here is the location, which is close to the corner of Evans-Tolox Road and North Bel Air. The zoning is C2, like most of the zoning around, around that. And here's a close-up of the aerial. So, the, uh, unit in question is the one where the, the star is on the end right here. It is a typical strip center built in, rezoned and built in the 1980s. Um, it's designed on a car orientation type, um, design. Um, there is, um, some good buffers around this part of the site, which is the closest. Here is the plat. And some photographs of the street views. You've got the business right here. It's liquor land on the, um, left-hand side of that, um, strip center, and the bottom photograph shows the tree buffer that's there. Uh, close-up photographs too. The pickup window and drive lanes will be on this side. Um, the drive lanes will be down here, and they'll all turn behind the building on the corner. Uh, the advantage of this side is that, that you do have the tree buffer, and you also have the grade change along North Bel Air Road as well. Here's some more photographs of the, um, approach to the building, and then this is the back part where you'd come around and turn, go back this way to where the, the window is. Uh, the concept plan shows the, the drive lanes with the turnaround, um, and then the pickup window will be on this side, um, of the building. This plan shows where the water meters are, and those will have to be located. This will be handled through the plan review process if this is approved, and inspections. Uh, this concept plan shows, um, is imposed onto the aerial. It shows where the tree buffer remains, and there's a condition included to, um, check that as well. So, the staff recommendation is approval with condition that tree buffer shall be maintained to provide screening of the pickup window and drive-through lanes from North Bel Air Road. That concludes staff recommendation.
Anyone here that would like to speak for or against this issue? I got any questions?
I got one, Bailey for staff. The, the drive-through lanes, is there any striping gonna be required for that? The picture looks really cool with the lines and such, but... I mean, it's a liquor store.
It's a concept plan. I believe that there will be striping involved. Um, the plan review process will actually require a plan that's a little bit more detailed in this. Um, and I believe the engineer is here. Have any other questions?
Is there gonna be striping?
So, so that there will be a striping plan. That was already, was previously sent in, and then we said, well, we can't do it because of this issue. Striping plan.
Okay.
But also relocate the water meters.
He just didn't want a traffic cop. Any other questions? Make the motion, see a motion to accept or deny this issue?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition file VA 23-03-02 variance to Section 90-147I3, allowing a drive-through between the building and the public road in Evans Town Center for the property at 4408 Evans-Tolox Road.
Striping for Mr. Butler.
Striping.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand.
Give a second.
Second.
There we go.
Okay, this, this concludes all the business for tonight. If we have a motion, adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Give a second.
Second.
That's true quick. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Much quicker than last week.
Much quicker.